Answers potentially um after that as well. So the submission we put in normally with a submission process, we would have plenty of time to engage with the business community, do research or arrange some meetings and that sort of thing, which is what we have done in the past with Lower Hut City quite extensively and have done, I have to admit, um a lot less with Upper Hut City draft annual plans. And this year, given COVID-19, of course, there was no opportunity to do that anyway. But the business community also has been very focused on recovery and trying to determine how they move forward. So I think that it's fair to say that in terms of business input into draft annual plans, rather limited by everyone's focus being on COVID-19. However, it's really important for, as the voice of business for the Hut Valley, to have a say on this. And I would just like to say that, you know, we have spent a lot of time together and with Upper Hut City Council, the Hut Valley Chamber of Commerce and Hut City Council working through the COVID-19 Hut Valley Business Response Team, which has worked very well. And we threw it together, literally, you know, a couple of weeks prior to lockdown. So in that sense, we've been working every day on Slack or and as the levels have changed, less on a daily basis. But certainly those meetings are continuing on a regular basis. So the Hut Valley Chamber of Commerce is the voice of business for the whole of the Hut Valley and certainly is well engaged with businesses up and down the valley. So we are all facing an economic challenges, challenge the like of which we have never seen before, and one that no one has any idea where this heads. So I can't tell you what the business community is going to do. I can't tell you what we need to do in terms of response. All I know is that as a community, the challenges are great and that the requirements for the next 12 months, two years, or however long it takes, it's not going to be six months, it's going to be longer term, will be extensive and it'll be new challenges that we haven't faced in in the past. So in the submission, I took the opportunity to include a lot of information based on the Hut Valley COVID-19 Business Response Team's survey of the business community as we were in Level Three and moving into Level Two. We're going to run another survey this month, once Level One is established, to see how that, what that feedback is and how the business community is responding and how it's feeling about the challenge that lies ahead. So I put a lot of that information in there, as you may have not seen that prior. And what it shows is a is the scale of the challenge ahead. Eighty-two percent of businesses were very concerned or at least somewhat concerned. It only doesn't, only seven percent considered that it didn't really matter to them. So, you know, that's that's significant. And I think some of the important parts of this survey was what they expected to see at Level Three, Level Two, looking forward for the next three months and six months. So sixty-four percent expected no change in staffing in the three months. Consider there's wages subsidy in there and the criteria for that has changed as well. And it takes time to change staffing. So and it also takes time for business owners and managers to figure out what changes actually need to be made. So they're operating in a sense of complete uncertainty. Also, the figure eighty-nine percent expected no change in the size of their premises. I don't think that represents the business community's desire. It reflects more the business community's ability to actually get out of their premises. So many have leases that they can't get out of in the next three months or the next six months. But what I think, so although there's not going to be changes in size, there's very increasing anecdotal evidence about the business community trying to reduce their rent overheads. I had a business in here at the chamber this morning. They have just left their premises and even though they have got eighteen months left on their lease, they are not manning their premises at all and are staying working from home. This is a small business and they will be trying to sublet. There are many businesses who are not returning to their office space, regardless of whether they can get out of their lease or not. So this is really important for city centre planning. And I wanted to bring that up in the submission. So businesses, it's not just the rent, it's the occupancy cost of their premises that they're looking to save. So if they have to keep paying their rent for a while to the end of their lease, they can still save costs like cleaning and consumables like tea and coffee and toilet paper and those sorts of things, photocopying and printing and all those consumables that actually when I even did the chamber's budget recently is significant. So, you know, where you might not be able to get out of your rent, you can still save quite a bit of money and everyone's looking to save as much money as possible. The seventy-three percent anticipating a decrease in income is massive. So you've got to remember that many businesses don't, weren't operating profitably prior to COVID-19. And if even those are expecting to see a decrease in income and seventy-three percent are also expecting to see a decrease in profitability. So that gives you a sense of the type of stress they're under. And they think it improves slightly. Well, some of those figures get quite a bit better in a six-month window. But of course, they don't know. Yeah, of course, that still in six months, over half are seeing a decrease in income and profitability. Certainly a big trend in terms of increased online activity. So we can see that there's major change. You can see this morning, there was an announcement, I think the AMP are not going to force people back into their offices. In fact, they're going to downscale their CBD offices. I know the employees' expectations have changed substantially and many want the flexibility now. I'm trying to recruit at the moment and certainly people I'm interviewing are saying, what sort of work from home options are there if you work with the Hut Valley Chamber of Commerce? So employees' expectations are changing and it's, we can't, I suppose you can force them to come back to the office. But if you want to retain them, you need to be reasonably flexible. So I just wanted to paint a picture of the, some of the economic fallout. It is not a clear picture at all. It's not the whole picture. It's just a sense of where we thought it was going, where the community thought it was going a few weeks back. And the world has changed very quickly, even in that time. If I compare the submission to the one I did for Lower Hut City, I think that was two weeks ago, already things are different. If I compare the two submissions, there's some common elements in there, but already things are changing so quickly. So I'd like to acknowledge the work that Upper Hut City Council has done to reduce the, to take into account COVID-19 in the draft annual plan and to provide some facility and some opportunities to respond. And certainly the rates, reducing the rates increase is a positive as we try to keep people in our, keep businesses in our, in our valley, really. It's a, there's a big task ahead in terms of retention. So I acknowledge and thank you for the reduction in the rates increase. I think the business community will find that positive. I would like to just highlight the need for continued investment in core infrastructure, things like water, flood management and roading, public transport, those sorts of things. They not only employ people locally, but they give your business community confidence to also invest. And that's what we need to encourage as well. And it will be useful in terms of retention. Certainly when I've done some planning with both city councils around what sort of facilities are here and capacity for businesses to come to the Hut Valley and be based, they certainly look to infrastructure, the quality of roading, the access to the port, the State Highway Two rail infrastructure, all those things are important. So it's good to not have cannibalised infrastructure investment completely in response to COVID-19. Many of the issues we face with infrastructure are there regardless of COVID-19. So we support that continued investment in core infrastructure and and the efforts around shovel-ready projects as well. The Recovery Fund, so we support the creation of the COVID-19 Recovery Fund. And I think it's unrealistic to expect, we know or should be able to identify where that will be required. But certainly business is going to need a whole lot of new support. And I would like to see some of that recovery fund directed towards supporting business. And, you know, we, here at the chamber, we are certainly restructuring all our, our whole business operation, way of operating, our membership structure, all the events we run, they'll all be focused around taking into account COVID and trying to retain businesses, support their growth, support their, the flexibility they're going to have to have and support them to adapt their business and to attract new businesses to the Hut Valley as well. So I think that you're going to see some, in the Recovery Fund, there wasn't much detail, but it did talk a little bit about timeframes. Certainly we need to not just look at Recovery Fund in terms of keeping those people who are currently in the Hut Valley here in business, but also the new opportunities that are going to emerge because of COVID-19 and some of systemic changes that are going to happen in the way consumers behave, customers behave and how markets behave. There's going to be real changes in that and we need to be able to adapt to it. And I think that Recovery Fund provides that ability to adapt and to help businesses adapt as well. So you can see like, you know, consumers are going to buy differently going forward. You can already see that with the online purchases. I was in the supermarket the other day and the trolleys lined up for everyone who's doing click and collect. But I've never seen that in the supermarket before, but just a whole row of trolleys all full of picked bags of groceries and people will just turn up for it. Commercial premises, I think, are an area where there's going to be major stress and challenge. I know of several businesses in Upper Hut who are not going back to their commercial premises and will be working from home. And that provides some challenges for our CBD. And then there are other businesses who are going to move out of larger CBDs. And actually, people in Upper Hut could be looking for new services in our CBD, like remote working, co-shared spaces, meeting rooms for businesses to come together. So there's some new opportunities. So there's a real transition. It's not all negative. It's not all driving rentals down. It's not all talking about empty shops and that sort of thing. But there are some, also some positives to come through in that as well. We don't really know what those are, but I know there's a lot of discussion about, you know, some shared spaces. Where can you get some meeting rooms that are not a cafe? Where can you get some Zoom rooms? Where can you get a boardroom in Upper Hut? You know, we can, four, maybe four or five people who normally work in town and Wellington City get together in Upper Hut for a professional meeting. So there's some new opportunities to happen in that space. You've got to remember, many of our employees who work in the city don't want to be driving in there every day of the week. They might only want to be working from home, say, two days a week. So satellite office spaces is just one example. I think there will be more opportunities as well for our CBD and I just don't know exactly what they are. You know, we're looking overseas to see what that is as well. Okay.
Okay, Helen, time.
Okay, fine. Great. So in terms of wrap up, I'd just like to highlight the youth strategy and the work we've done together around the Ministry of Education and the reform of vocational education becomes more important now as young people are facing so much uncertainty around employment. It's a very important area that we also need to address as well. Okay.
Thank you. Now, questions for Helen. councillor MacLeod.
Um, Kyoa Helen, nice to see you again. I just have a couple of questions. I know that you probably, I mean, you did indicate, you know, we don't have any idea about the Recovery Fund either really at the moment. But do you have any, you know, a couple of things that we might like to consider for that and what to include? And the second thing, Helen, is that, you know, for many, through the, through the lockdown, the environment took a bit of a breath, took a bit of a breather. And I just wonder how, how you're able to reconcile that whole, you know, a push for infrastructure whilst also looking after the environment too completely.
Sure. So, yeah, great. So let's have a think about the environment first. You know, I think this working from home and satellite offices and the opportunity for some co-shared space for business people, and I don't mean just business owners, but employees, because you've got to think a chamber's not just about employers, it's about employees as well. I think that could be really positive for the environment. I have to say, you know, when you join all that traffic, when I join the traffic coming down to Lower Hut, you know, I prefer not to, and I prefer to work from home, you know, I think that's a really positive thing to not have all that traffic streaming in to Wellington City morning and then sitting on River Road every night, especially, you know, around where I live, Silverstream River Road and then Waka Tiki Street. So I think there's real positives around working from home, satellite offices and creating more of a satellite base in Upper Hut. I think that's really positive for the environment. In terms of water, not so much from a chamber perspective, but from a personal perspective, I think water is hugely important to Upper Hut. And whatever we can do to preserve the beauty of it. You know, I've spent quite a bit of time up Kaitoki. The water up there is spectacular. It might sound silly, but you know, when you do that beautiful walk up around Rivendell and across the swing bridge and that, the water up there is beautiful. And I think it's a real asset, our whole environment, our whole Upper Hut environment. And it needs to, you know, we need to not go back to some of the habits we had before just because we had them. It's, this is an opportunity to actually do some different things with the work environment, notwithstanding the challenge and pain that we're all feeling as a business community. So that's on the, yeah, sorry.
No, you're all right.
And the first question, Angela, around, what was the first question, sorry?
The Recovery Fund, you know.
Yeah, the Recovery Fund, yeah, sure. So, so I think that there's a real need for connectedness now. I think that what's happened through COVID-19 is, especially in Upper Hut, you know, people have had a real sense for loving local. And I don't, I mean, I, you know, I try and spend all my money in Upper Hut because it's my home. But, you know, you'd walk into, the first place I went was Tricky Sandwiches, actually. And Phil Gorman was in there. We had a lovely time. I met a load of people and it was really nice. And so I think that love local, that I think Upper Hut's got that community that's much closer than Lower Hut, to be honest. And we're more, as Upper Hut people, we're more, we love our, we're more identified as part of our city. And maybe a little bit more parochial, I don't know, but we just absolutely identify with our city more. And I think that in terms of recovery, there's a lot, to be honest, the chamber could do a lot better job in Upper Hut around connectedness and bringing that business community together. There's a lot of anxiety and stress right now. And in the business community, you know, business owners I know are not sleeping. I know that they are working very long hours. They're very stressed. It's very hard for business owners. No one wants to make people redundant. No one wants to see ten years of their business growth go down the tubes. No one, you know, it's not, it's just a really awful thing. And so there's a whole lot of need around connectedness. There's work around events. There's work around training in terms of giving people some of these new skills they need around, you know, employment skills are really important right now, cash flow management. So yesterday, for example, we did a live stream for, actually about people who are going online. And I know there's about ten shops in Upper Hut that have gone online during COVID-19. And they need to learn, we're doing some live streams for them specifically about how to drive traffic to their website. So there's a whole lot of new skills they need to learn. So I think training's important, connectedness for events. And there's some work around taking, identifying some new opportunities and taking those for Upper Hut. This is a good reset for us, well, it was a bad reset, but it's an opportunity for a reset. And I think, so there's some ideas there. I've got some, I've written some notes actually on that, to be honest.
Okay, so we're pressed for time here. So we've got one more question. One more question, councillor Swales.
Excuse me, Wayne, I did have my hand up for a long time.
Yeah, councillor Swales.
Okay, Helen, when I read your information, I've got a number of things. How many people responded to the survey?
Well, more, yeah. So there were about, I think there was four hundred and forty-seven. So I can't tell you off the top of my head how many of those were in Upper Hut, but it was the second largest group. And it was distributed out through Upper Hut City Council. Actually, so Sarah and Stuart and the boutique helped to get this into the Upper Hut city, Upper Hut-based businesses. So it's the best representation of Upper Hut businesses we've ever had.
So I'd like to, as a councillor, know what that number is and have that segregated data. Because when I look at these stats, it doesn't mean anything to me without that data.
Yeah, sure, I've got that.
Yeah. So if we could have that distributed to all of us. The other thing is, when you talk about people not, not, so when you talk about people not coming in and not being profitable and supporting their businesses. So how do you see if they're not going to go back into their rental accommodation? And we start looking at our rates. We've always had a rates differential around commercial properties and residential. So if they're going to become vacant, which is what you're leading us to believe, where would that put us? And what would you want us to do around that differential?
Okay, so what I think is really important is to get a, people don't, have not all made the decision about where they're going to be based. And it will be a transition, do you know what I mean? So some businesses have already said, I'm not going to go back to my premises. Others are still deciding. So I don't know how big that is yet. I just think that that's a real threat, you know what I mean, and an opportunity. And so on the differential, I think we need to get an understanding, we need to, we can't look at business as the sector that can afford to pay more than residential all the time. It's not a default setting. We need to re-establish the need for a differential. You know, I want to rethink it.
And my last question is, when you're talking about the different businesses that came to you, did you segregate that information? Because you're talking about a lot of businesses aren't going to go back to their premises. What type of businesses are those?
Okay, so I can give you some examples. Helen, so there is virtual assistant type business, you know, office admin, support, that sort of business, web-based, people who do websites and marketing are not going to go back to their premises. I think those are two that come straight to mind in Upper Hut. Although one of those, they both live in Upper Hut as well, so they'll be home-based businesses suddenly. You know what I mean? And that changes again. That changes again. That means those people aren't in the CBD necessarily, but they're running their businesses from home. And so we might have to look at how homes are used as businesses.
But that's already happening. And so I wanted some data from you about the types of businesses that have rental, commercial properties that you're saying are not going to go. What type of businesses?
Okay, so some of them are retail, some of them are professional services, some of them will be, I'm just trying to think of another one that I know that's closing down. So professional services. Yeah, I can't give you another example off the top of my head. So retail and professional services comes to mind. If you want to put admin, web, virtual assistants, all that sort of stuff, professional accounting, those sorts. Easy to move those home.
Okay, we've got to move on. So one quick question, Paul. Councillor Lambert.
Helen, with the flow of people turning from Wellington City and around the region, what sort of trends or information have you been picking up from your fellow chambers around the region? And the other thing is, are you making your surveys and your seminars available to those people who aren't even members of the Hut Valley Chamber of Commerce?
Okay, so let me answer the second question first. So everything we have done since the end of February has been provided free for every business in the whole community. There have been no charges for all twenty-seven of our live streams. And we have not required people to be members at all. So there has been no different treatment for members and non-members in terms of all the training we are providing currently. And I know people are employing them, I know people who are watching them on construction sites on their smartphones. Do you know what I mean? So there is no distinction, in Upper Hut actually, there is no distinction between members and non-member services through COVID-19. And we will continue to provide a range of free services for non-members across the valley.
Thanks, Helen.
Yeah, sorry. I suppose I should have made that point. It's just, it was just right at the beginning, we decided everything was free. And when you're working with a team between two city councils and us, we can't just split members and non-members. It really hurts us.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, it's very expensive for us, but, you know, that's not about whether you're a member or not. We will ask people to be members at some point. We're not there yet.
And the regional connection and other chambers?
Yeah, absolutely. So there is a regional connection with other chambers. There's actually an international connection. I learn, I study what happens in the States with the chambers every day. So every night they are on live. And so we're looking internationally as well with what chambers are doing internationally. Of course, take into account the different COVID situations there. And we're closely with the other chambers in the region from the Hawks Bay, across to Taranaki to Wellington, you know, we meet regularly and share information. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Helen, and thanks for the submission. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Now, welcome, Phil, who's been patiently waiting. And
Thanks, Wayne.
Sport has certainly not been exempt from the crisis that we've all been through, particularly community sport. But you'll be, you'll be at the coalface dealing with many of those community groups.
Yeah. So, Tenaka Katakata, Tenai Tamei, Kia Koto, I'll take it that our submission is as read. But I do want to make, in a very short period of time, some additional comments to our submission before providing opportunity for some questions. So seven years ago, this organisation, if I was asked to describe it, was an organisation that received nearly all its funding from Sport New Zealand. And their investment purchased from us, the need to work with seven targeted sports and increase participation levels in those seven targeted sports. We went through a review of strategy and indeed the board of Sport Wellington approved a new strategy as of mid-March this year. Clearly with the arrival of COVID, we had to pause and reorient the business to support the community even more so over the last eight weeks. What I do want to acknowledge to the councillors is the support that we've had from your council officials during what has been, as I would describe it, a very difficult period for the sport and active recreation community. We are now, though, Sport Wellington, transitioning our focus back towards the strategy and its implementation across our region. The purpose for Sport Wellington under this new strategy is around transforming lives in the Wellington region. We're going to do that by focusing on three objectives. Getting less active people more active, increasing the quality opportunities for all in sport and active recreation in particular, and being, allowing communities to be better connected and stronger as a result of the focus around sport and active recreation. Critical to all of this is our collaboration with partners and stakeholders. For us, partners like the Upper Hut City Council. How are we going to do this? We're going to do it through leadership and advocacy. We're going to do it through a delivery component. And we're going to do it through partnering, as I've described, with organisations such as your council. The strategy that the board have adopted shows a strong shift towards physical activity. A focus on influencing the activity levels of people who are less active, further positioning the organisation in a regional leadership role and raising the visibility of biculturalism and the work that we do in our community. Success for our communities in the region relies on our combined ability to work collectively towards enabling physical activity, which for us involves play, active recreation, active transport and sport. Having a shared outcome between us, wanting to have a collective impact on the wellbeing of our communities is a great opportunity for us to play to our respective strengths and avoid the duplication and the crossover that we have and the work that we do from day to day. We already have a shared region-wide physical activity strategy. It's called Living Well. Its purpose is to achieve greater collective impact on the wellbeing and outcomes acquired through physical activity. A mechanism for this is an agreed planning framework, which will help identify where and how we can work together at a regional, sub-regional or district level. It's an approach that's been endorsed by this council and indeed the seven others. It features in the first half of our submission. We want to have a conversation with this council about how we might do things differently, but better, to build better communities in line with our shared purpose through the region-wide Living Well Physical Activity Strategy. Let's be clear in each of our individual roles and purpose. In fact, I think your last speaker referred to it as, it's improved the connectedness across the work that we do. Wayne, that concludes the formal sort of piece from me. I'm very happy to take any questions that councillors might have.
Any questions for Phil? Excuse me. Councillor MacLeod.
Yeah, hi Phil. I just wanted to ask the same question of you that I did of Helen around the Recovery Fund. Fund. What, what would you think that Sport Wellington would like to see in order, if anything, from that fund to help you do what you need to do?
Yes. It's interesting that shortly after we went into lockdown, we surveyed our community. And that's the survey results and the analysis, I've got it available via our website, if people want to go and have a look at it. But where we saw the greatest need other than the immediate cash flow problems that a number of organisations had, was indeed how do they run themselves as a small business? Because that's what our clubs and our regional sports organisations are, they are small businesses. And I can tell you, the information that we have certainly learnt and obtained over the last eight weeks is that those small businesses are not well-run, largely because they're run by volunteers, largely because they're run by people who are busy anyway, largely because they're run by people who have a passion for a particular recreation activity or a sport, but all of a sudden find themselves in a role that perhaps they don't have the skill sets for. Sport Wellington has discussed this as an organisation and the board is looking now to support recovery across our region through the introduction of a shared services model so that we would facilitate organisations like clubs and regional organisations being able to access a service that would allow them to run effectively as a small business, to focus on what they're good at doing, which is creating opportunities for participation. So for us, it's that, that business piece, how do we enable these small businesses to run more effectively and efficiently?
Thanks, Phil. Councillor Griffiths?
Thanks, Phil, thanks for coming along. I've just got a question regarding our local sports group. You had a fund that you're offering up that could apply for, have you had many local clubs applying, do you know?
So I'm assuming you're referring to the Community Resilience Fund, which was this fund provided by Sport New Zealand. That fund was provided to each of the RSTs nationally and the RSTs were asked if we would administer that fund. So at the moment, we have just under $600,000 that we have pushed out the door into our region to both clubs and regional organisations. Clubs unfortunately have been limited to an amount of $1,000 by way of a maximum application, but the regional organisations have been able to draw on up to $40,000 from that fund. So at the moment, we have, as I say, just under $600,000 that has gone out the door. We have until the 19th of June, I think it is, to provide any additional funding. And my pitch to a club or a regional organisation that hasn't applied, then they should do so because there is still money there.
Sorry, my, my question, just for clarity, do you know any of the stats around Upper Hut?
I don't, sorry, I will provide you straight after this with the detailed stats of Upper Hut, I don't know them off the top of my head. I know what they are regionally, but, but not by city or district.
I know a number of our clubs have applied for.
Yeah, there's been over 50 clubs that have applied, plus regional organisations.
Last question, councillor Swales.
Thank you, Phil, thank you. And I really appreciate your acknowledgement of what council has done with regard to the fees and the sporting fields and things like that. It's something that probably a lot of people don't appreciate, so thank you for acknowledging that. The other thing, Phil, is you were talking about management and supporting the local clubs. And whilst we have you as a Wellington region, which I understand that area, is it something that we should be looking at business models per city? That maybe we should be looking at a layer underneath you to help support those clubs so that there is a more direct line? Because I understand that, you know, governance is really important as well as the business model. And would those be some of the things that we could actually support you out of the fund that councillor MacLeod has said to help give that governance training? Just a suggestion.
And the answer to that is absolutely, absolutely. The work that we're doing around a shared services approach is being supported by BDO and it's being supported by Sport New Zealand. So it will have in the very first instance, as we determine what the options might be, a regional lens across it. So absolutely very happy to talk to, in particular, Upper Hut City Council, because I can tell you that is, again, an area that we need to strengthen both at club and regional level.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Phil, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, that ends our submission, hearing of submissions this morning. One, Emma McGahn, did not join us. So what we'd leave to do, just so that councillors are aware, we will now receive all the submissions attached to the report, happy to move that, the seconded by councillor MacLeod. All those in favour, raise your hand. Two, and then just as a follow-on so that we know where to from here, so the next step will be deliberations at our council meeting to be held on the 17th of June. And, and then if there's any changes after that, it will go to council deliberations in the 30th of June. And like we said earlier on, during the submission process, that any actions that come out of the consultation will go through the long-term plan consultation next year, because there will be a number of actions that come out of it. So again, thank you and thank you to all the submitters this morning, as we work our way through the, the submission process. When we go off live, and I'd like the councillors just to stay, stay on board with us for a moment.
Wayne, I have a comment for the public who might be viewing. Would you, Wayne, would you be able to confirm, the meeting of the 17th for the public who might be watching, would you confirm that that will be an in-person meeting at the council chambers so that anybody listening now will know where that will be?
Well, at this stage, it's likely to be yes. Okay, thank you and appreciate the participation. Thank you.